Please.
Mr. Serone.
Here.
Mr. Gatewood.
Present.
Ms. Johnson. Dr. Maria.
Present.
Mr. Boger.
Present.
Ms. Simelton.
Present.
Ms. Ven- Venmus.
Present.
Pope Rie.
Present.
And Kelly Carnout.
Present.
Present.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, Board and guests. It's a great evening today to begin our evening Board meeting with our pride awards. So we want to invite Executive Director of Schools, Mr. Francis, to walk us through tonight's celebrations.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Kilgady. Tonight, the Board of Education acknowledges Pride winners from Thompson Junior High, Traumber Junior High, Bednarsek Junior High, and the GOAL program for the month of March. Pride stands for proudly recognizing individuals demonstrating excellence. The Board of Education began the program nine years ago to recognize, promote, and celebrate the many contributions made by teachers and employees throughout our district. We thank our generous district partners Chick-fil-A, Culvers, Imagination Print and Design, Huntington Learning Center, ServBank, and The Scoop for helping to make this program a success. We would also like to thank all those who nominated individuals for consideration. Awardees, after your name is called and we share your nomination, please come forward to be congratulated by the Board and Dr. Kilgady, and then wait until the rest of your team comes for a group picture. First, we have Thompson Junior High School. And our first winner is Purim Barnes, Spanish teacher. Purim brings out the joy in her students and leaves a positive impact by encouraging them to be excited about learning. One student said, "Having her class taught me success and failure." She is a supportive teacher who will encourage you to reach for the stars, but also ensures you can succeed on the ground first. Congratulations, Purim. Next up, we have social studies teacher Nick Bono. Nick has created a positive atmosphere for his students that is unmatched, as shared by one nominator. Nick brings social studies to life creatively, showing his passion for teaching. Beyond intellectually nurturing his students, all appreciate his kindness and compassion. "He has made my life and many others' lives promising and fulfilling just by being in it," a student said. Congratulations, Nick. And next, we have another social studies teacher, Kelly Springsteen. Kelly is not here tonight, but deserves her accolades all the same. She is dedicated to making learning fun and engaging for her students. Both staff members and family members are impressed by her organization and communication skills. Kelly cares deeply for her students and their voices, serving as a student council sponsor in addition to teaching. One parent said, "Her teaching is the epitome of the district's mission to empower, support, and motivate students in their educational journey." Congratulations, Kelly. And next up, we have custodian Yosefina Garcia. She is not here. She is probably working at the moment. She is here. No, she just got here. Welcome. Ms. Garcia's hard work and dedication helps cultivate a cheerful atmosphere in her building. She maintains a high level of standards and goes out of her way to help staff. As shared by a nominator, her attitude during the transition of improvements in the building has been a catalyst of positivity that carries the staff as a leader. Congratulations. And lastly, from Thompson, Secretary Lorraine Zwysin. Lorraine connects with students in a special way, serving as a comforting presence for all. She goes above and beyond, not just for her school, but also for each individual student. Lorraine tirelessly works to make sure all the students feel safe and loved as they come through the office. Congratulations, Lorraine. And let's get one more round of applause as our pride winners get together for a picture. At this time, any building admin, Mr. Lewis, make your way up there. Congratulations, Thompson. Our next spotlight school is Traumber Junior High School. Our first recipient is Marcia Carino. As an eighth-grade ELA teacher, Marcia's students feel welcome in her classroom as she takes them, takes time to learn about them and their learning styles. She makes learning fun. Marcia also serves as a mentor for her students during their time at Traumber and beyond. As shared by a nominator, Mrs. Carino encourages her students to strive in her classroom. She is always willing to help them be their best. Congratulations. Next up, Tracy Shurtley, ELA teacher. Tracy demonstrates integrity, professionalism, and a passion for education in her work. Her students' needs are her top priority. Tracy pours effort into the lessons she teaches, continually challenging herself and others to grow. "It's clear that she is more than just a teacher. She is a mentor, a role model, and an advocate for students," one nominator said. Congratulations, Tracy. Next up, Shayna Zimmerman. Shayna is a school counselor and a friendly face to both students and staff. She places students first while also caring for her fellow staff members. She makes time to check in with students to learn how to best support them. She volunteers for each student event that there is and is involved in staff gatherings, one nominator said. "She communicates often and openly with families and goes the extra mile every day." Congratulations. Next up, Vanita Parsons. Vanita is a full-time, dedicated building sub with a warm, welcoming presence for all students at Traumber. Aside from working as a substitute, she also possesses the skills that make her an excellent emcee at all school assemblies. Her nominator said, "Students love her, and she's built a great rapport with all students and staff." Congratulations, Vanita. And finally, Bridgette Zaleski. I had it. Bridgette Zaleski. Bridgette is a sign language interpreter, and she brings so much school spirit to Traumber every day. She also dedicates time outside of the school day in supporting her school community, such as serving as Traumber's Student Council Advisor for the past four years. As a nominator shared, she has built strong relationships with students and staff and has helped transform our school into a welcoming, positive environment. Congratulations, Bridgette. At this time, Mr. Evans coming up for some pictures, and one big round of applause for everybody at Traumber. All right. Next up, we have Bednarsek Junior High School. First of all, we have Josh Brooks, Choir and Music Director. Josh Brooks instills a love of the musical arts into his students. He puts great effort into his communication with students and their families. His dedication to his craft has allowed choir students to grow into a community that can rely on each other. Mr. Brooks is a class act by leading with rich character, kindness, and an unwavering value of collaboration with his team. Congratulations, Josh. Next up, Lisa Hiemstra, Band Director. Lisa strives to provide her students with the best possible junior high band experience. She puts in time to ensure her students receive the opportunity to showcase their hard work and talents. Lisa has created a positive environment for her students who love spending time in her classroom, even outside of their class period. "Not only do they thrive as musicians under her direction, but they have such discipline and respect for her," a nominator said. Congratulations, Lisa. Next up, Special Education Teacher Julie Velasco. Julie is intentionable, intentional about making genuine connections with students and staff alike. Her acts of service speak volumes about her character. She leads and organizes Bednarsek's house system, which has helped foster a collective sense of belonging and ownership in her school community. A fellow staff member shared, "She is thoughtful about seeing, validating, and bringing to the table those who may not be considered or thought of." Congratulations, Julie. And Erica Darren, Principal's Secretary. Erica is greatly appreciated by her school community for all she does. She's always ready and willing to help students, families, and staff. Her nominator shared, "Erica is kind-hearted, supportive, and a person with a moral compass. She's strong communication skills, effective organization, flexibility, active listening, resilience, respect, positivity, creative problem-solving, vision, and transparency." Congratulations, Erica. And from our Assistive Technology Team, we have Kim Rich Miller-Zinn. Kim is known for her hard work at Bednarsek. Her passion is admirable, and implied by her nominator portrays enthusiasm about her school environment. "She's the most kind and hardworking person I have ever met," her nominator said. Congratulations, Kim. All right. As Mr. Oldacre comes on up, we will take some pictures. For our final building celebration tonight, we move to GOAL. First of all, we have Counselor Nicole Perry. Nicole is dedicated to her role of serving students, demonstrating passion, and a strong work ethic. She truly cares about the success of each student. Nicole is always willing to take on new challenges, seeking both personal and professional growth. "Her unwavering commitment to her students and her proactive attitude make her an invaluable asset to her team," her nominator said. Congratulations, Nicole. Next up, we have Junior High Teacher Shane Smart. Shane makes learning fun for his students and finds opportunities to teach valuable lessons throughout the school day. He is flexible, constantly adapting to the unique needs of his students and the GOAL program. Mr. Smart is the ultimate team member, as he is willing to help with anything asked, a nominator said. Congratulations, Shane. And finally, we have Teacher Assistant Kim Redfield. Kim's charming personality and commitment to the well-being of all students has made a lasting impact. Her efforts are greatly appreciated by all. Her nominator shared, "Her genuine concern and enthusiasm foster a supportive and engaging learning environment where every student feels seen and supported." Congratulations, Kim. All right. Let's have one final round of applause as we recognize and celebrate all of these amazing staff members for all they do. Honoraries, please proceed out to the hall gathering at the landing of the stairs for a group photo. Thank you to the families and colleagues who were here to support our winners.
We're moving now to 5.1, Public Comment. On behalf of the Board of Education, I'd like to thank you for attending tonight's meeting. We value the feedback we receive from our members of the public and encourage everyone to take an active interest in their public school system. Residents interested in speaking to the Board this evening are asked to have completed a comment card and presented it to the secretary to the Board. When the secretary calls your name, I ask that you come to the microphone, state your name for the public record, and give your feedback. Please note that comments are limited to three minutes per person, and the Board and administration do not typically respond to questions. Comments should, comments should address the Board of Education as a whole and not be directed to an individual board member, audience, or staff member. The Board of Education will not address concerns raised during public comment against individual employees at a board meeting. A complaint against an employee should be in writing and signed by the person who makes it, and the Board of Education will refer any such complaints for appropriate review. We ask that during your public comment, you refrain from any campaigning or advocating for your candidacy. This is not the form for that, and we would, and it would not be fair to other candidates. Follow-up to your questions or concerns will be addressed by administration through the contact information provided on the comment card. Thank you.
Chad Rapper.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Chad Rapper, and I just wanted to have some comments regarding some of the changes that we know are happening with the special ed program. I'm sure it's no surprise that this has been a hot topic amongst the parents who have kids involved in the program. I have a daughter who goes to Murphy, and she's been there a couple of years now, and my daughter deals with what's called KBG syndrome, which is a chromosomal disorder, which if you Google it, it says there's only about 100 people in the world that have it. The number's grown. We're now at about 1,000. So it's not, it's fairly rare, obviously. It comes along with bonuses of childhood speech praxia, level-one autism amongst countless other things that impair their ability to learn. The difficulty that we're having with what's going on is, it seems like a lot of this is happening without any real feedback from the parents. And the problem that we're seeing is, when zoning happened a couple of years ago, the Gen Ed kids were given the option, you want to stay at the school you're at, or would you like to move on to whatever school you can be zoned for? And special ed kids aren't being given that opportunity, and that seems fairly crazy if you have a special ed kid that you know has some pretty intense special needs. Our daughter, on average, takes easily a couple of years to get acclimated to a program. At home, she's a typical 12-year-old, doesn't stop talking, which sometimes we wish wasn't the case. But it takes her a long time to get comfortable with people, and I mean a long time. And the move to Murphy was a difficult one, and it's been a couple of years now, and she's now comfortable, at least mostly comfortable. She has a half a dozen teachers. They all love her to death, and she's been great with the program. It's been amazing for her. And now we find out she's going to get moved to Traumber, which, you know, is convenient because it's a heck of a lot closer, but we know what this is going to do to her mentally and how much this is going to hurt her, because that move's going to happen, it's going to be for a year, and then she's going to have to move again to go to Oswego. And the impact is massive. You have no idea. There isn't a single special ed teacher she has that thinks this is good, not one. The assistant principal, not good. Nobody thinks this is a good idea. Now, if a parent has a child and they want them to be at their home school, God bless them, may the force be with them, do it. But for the kids that have other issues that make it really hard to acclimate, this is going to set our daughter back so far that words can't even begin to describe what's going to happen. Because now she's going to go to a new environment and start all over again, and she just shuts down, like won't talk, or she'll, she'll use one word, right? Like, my dad doesn't live here. He's in Colorado. She's still, we talk to him regularly via FaceTime, still one word with him, you know? Won't do sentences, won't talk a lot. So it's, it's very problematic, and it's very upsetting, because it's just, it's strange that the Gen Ed kids were given the opportunity to do, to make a choice, but the most vulnerable of the kids that we deal with are being told, "Sorry."
Thank you so much for your time.
Say what?
Thank you so much.
All right. So I'll end with this. SEL is something we really push, right? And we want that to be more than just a slogan, because if we're not truly treating these kids for who they are and what they need, then it's just going to be a slogan. And we've now, we need a lot more than just slogans in the U.S., so I hope you guys will reconsider that.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Chloe Sanchez.
Hello. Good evening. My name is Chloe Sanchez, and my child is a fourth grader in SD 308 Stephan-Hardie Hearing Program at Prairie Point Elementary School. I'd first like to express my sincere gratitude to the district, administration, and community as a whole. Your dedication to the success of our children is invaluable, and it truly takes a village. My child has been in the district's Stephan-Hardie Hearing Program since early childhood, and though DHH programs are few and far between, it is, in my experience, that this one is exceptional. I've recently been made aware of plans for changes to take place in the Special Education Department, including the DHH program, specifically a change of school location. This is where I ask that you please take great thought, care, and consideration into the possible relocation of the elementary DHH program. My child has grown and progressed significantly over the years because of the DHH program and the brilliant and inspiring individuals that it's comprised of. But equally as important, it is because of the abundance of love and support of the entire Prairie Point School community and its environment that my child has flourished. To suddenly uproot well-established students in the program and plop them down into an entirely new school won't just hinder development, but will almost certainly result in measurable setbacks and regression, especially at a crucial time when they should be focusing on preparing for the imminent transition to middle school and the great adjustment that will be for any child, but especially for DHH children like mine. I hope that together, we will make the right decisions in order to continue to set our children up for success, just as we have been thus far. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Faith Camardo.
Do you want to reset the clock? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Hi. I have seen a lot of you at the numerous forums I have attended over the past couple of years. My name is Faith Suratani Camardo. I am the Vice President of EPEC. However, today I am speaking on behalf of dozens of parents who I have been discussing these recent changes with. I am here as a concerned and baffled and exasperated parent. I have a son who is seven years old and in the first grade at a District 308 school. He has autism. He spends 60% of his day in a Stars classroom and 40% of his day in a general education classroom. When my son first started out in kindergarten last year, it was extremely difficult. On his first day of school, five teachers and the principal had to surround him to keep him from running into the street and chasing down my car. Most mornings, it took him no less than half an hour to be convinced to get out of the car. He had never experienced anything like this before. The preschool he attended was only two hours, and this school day was seven hours. I knew in my heart that although I wanted to quit my job and homeschool him, it was in his best interest to send him to a school that would provide a quality education as well as plenty of socialization. Over the past nearly, nearly two years, my son has experienced tremendous growth, both in academics and in social-emotional learning. His reading skills are emerging beautifully, and he loves and excels in mathematics, which I can promise you is not genetic. When we are out and about in Oswego, we are constantly running into people, adults and kids of all ages, who know my son by name and eagerly greet him. This is a complete turn from what it was when he was younger. It has been such a long road to get there, but my son is positively thriving thanks to all the hard work, courage, tenacity that he has put into his learning experience, and the amazing team he's had at his school. A couple of weeks ago, or maybe a week, I sat in my car in the school pickup line waiting for the bell to ring. I got a call from the school's program administrator, who informed me that his school would no longer house Stars classes and that he would be moved to a different school. This would be effective in the next, at the start of the next school year. My son had his IEP meeting in February, which we set goals and agreed on necessary accommodations under the assumption that his team and school placement would remain the same next year, an assumption that any rational adult would have made. A move this swift to change schools seems cruel and calculated. So many students who rely on consistency and have made such great strides will backslide, and that should matter to everyone involved. Over the past few years, I have participated in numerous forums regarding changes in the district. At the time, a part of me felt like it was all a show. It didn't feel genuine. It felt like a performance orchestrated by quasi-public figures who wanted to convey that they were invested. My theories were confirmed upon receiving the news of what I am calling the vast exodus of the neurodivergence. You, it feels to us as though our thoughts were never really heard. You never wanted to hear our thoughts, our fears, our needs, and our concerns. It felt more so that in these forums, the specifically formatted questions were made to give you material for you to support the decisions that you had already made. The whole process has been aggressively non-transparent, and we, the parents, need and deserve answers, because frankly, this all seems ludicrous. Based on the patterns we have seen, it seems as though when a solution is needed, the students receiving special education services are always pushed out of the way to make room for the, who the decision-makers seem, or deem more deserving of consistency and stability. Neurodivergent students thrive on consistency and stability, and neurotypical students thrive being in the midst of those who are different-minded than them. So, sorry. In summary, I'm going to skip through. We need our children to be shown respect. We need them to be valued and to supported. We need to have a seat at the table where these decisions are making. There is no reason that of all the forums that have been hosted, the parents should have been left out of any decision-making here. We need to have conversations with the people who are making these decisions and not whatever PR person you choose to send our way that week. That part's really important to me. And we need, okay, I'm going to skip over that. I thought we had five minutes, not three. Anyway, we, we've been giving minimum information about what is happening last year, why this decision was made, and what we can do about it. We have to go, all of us are revisiting our IEPs and having to redo them, which also puts a lot of extra pressure on the educators, on the teams. We feel this decision was made way too quickly, with no input from parents, with no transparency, and we feel that our trust has been completely broken in this process after repeatedly, over the past couple of years, telling the board members who seem to be interested in these issues what we wanted as parents and what we wanted for our kids, what we need for our kids.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Cheryl Flynn.
I thought it was five minutes, too. Somewhere on a website, it does say five minutes, just to let you guys know. My name is Cheryl Flynn, I am the President of EPEC. I am here today speaking on behalf of myself as a parent and an advocate. I come before you today a bit frustrated regarding the communication from the Special Education Department. From IEP meetings to the changes in programming within the district, I feel as though decisions are being made without fully considering how these changes affect the individuals involved, especially the students. At my child's IEP meeting, there have been several occasions that I didn't feel like a true member of the team. I was told what the district will do rather than having a genuine collaborative discussion. But the issue isn't confined to IEP meetings. As the new administration pushes forward with changes, families are finding out last minute with little opportunity to negotiate or even understand the full impact of these changes, especially when it is coming to programming for the upcoming year. Being a parent of a child with special needs can be stressful. Parents need time to process changes. More importantly, we need to ensure that our children will be safe and well-supported in any new environment. If we have concerns, we have, we need the opportunity to discuss those with the appropriate administrators and find alternative solutions. In an effort to increase transparency and collaboration with parents, I am hoping that the Special Education Department will consider holding town hall meetings in advance of any significant changes going forward. This would allow families the chance to better understand the changes being made, the reasoning behind them, and most importantly, give us time to process and ensure the safety and well-being of our children. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
David Baker.
Good evening, my name is David Baker. I'm going to change it up a little bit and go for a different topic. I just wanted to, I initially intended to share this at the last meeting, but I wanted to voice some support from a parent perspective regarding the strategic plan that the board is in the process of considering. I've had the opportunity to kind of preview the plan as a member of the Superintendent's Advisory Group, and I've been able to see firsthand the amount of work put into it and also the passion behind it. Dr. Calgari and his team have poured so much into this, but the thing that's been eye-opening to me and wonderful to see from an insider's perspective is it's really not out of obligation, but out of a genuine desire to improve as well as a passion for the kids, the community, and ultimately, the future leaders of our country. SD 308 is already a great district, but I appreciate Dr. Calgari's wisdom to recognize how much better it can be with intentional strategic improvement initiatives. At one of the advisory group meetings that we had, there was an icebreaker question, and it said, "If SD 308 were a vehicle, what kind would it be and why?" And somebody gave an answer in there that I thought was really, really good. He said, "It would be like a classic car, like, say, a 1965 Mustang." Like a restoration project, the district has a lot of potential, there's a lot of good things underneath, but it needs a little work, and it needs some updating, and it needs some improvement. And then it's going to be something really special that can shine even more than it does in its current state. So just like restoring a car, I think it's important for the district to have scope, assess the current condition, have a clear vision of the desired result, and a plan for how to get there. The strategic plan does just that, so please view it as an investment into the district, community, and most importantly, the children and students whose very futures depend on our willingness not only to do the right thing, but also to be committed to stick with it for the long haul. Obviously, it's not a short-term plan, it's going to take a lot of long-term commitment. Related to that, I just want to challenge the board to consider ways to communicate to the general public, particularly the voters in the area regarding district improvements, especially some of the financial improvements that have taken place in recent months and years. You know, voters don't necessarily come to these meetings, they don't know what's going on, but they will vote. And at some point, the district is going to need additional resources, additional funds or whatever, so I think it's very important to try to get the positive message out there. I'm out of time, I'll just say I appreciate Dr. Calgari's leadership. I personally have known superintendents who do not seek feedback and input from the community or even educators, and seeing his approach to things is refreshing, I think it's good for the district. And from a parent perspective, that's very much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Elizabeth Baker.
Hello, my name is Elizabeth Baker. I have two students, one at Plank and one at OEHS. I want to address the issue of the backpacks in schools. The first is regarding the amount of, my first issue is the amount of time the students have between passing periods. The students have a three-minute passing period as of the 23-24 school year. Prior to that, it was a four-minute passing period. For the high school students here on the advisory board, these students had at least four minutes to get from one classroom to the next while they were in middle school. Middle, one minute can mean a world of difference. While most middle school students spend 77% of their school day in the pod, where each class is near their lockers, some students have other activities that take them to the other end of the school. These activities include electives, band, choir, and advanced placement classes. Not to mention, the gym is in the complete opposite direction of some of the pods. My youngest son this year faced a situation where he went from his pod to the gym, and then back to his pod, and then downstairs again for an elective. His pod is currently the one furthest from the gym on the second floor. Last year, he had band, and he was frequently late for his next class, which was art, because there wasn't enough time to be, both put his instrument away and then walk to his class in a timely manner. Those two classes were fairly far from each other, he was also in an advanced placement math class that was not near his pod. Three minutes is only 180 seconds. While some students will have time to get to their lockers between classes, not all will, and not every class, and they are not allowed to run. The second point I want to make is in regards to belongings. On any given day, students are required to bring with them to class most, if not all, of these things: their computer, a notebook and folder, a pen, a pencil, and a highlighter, school planner, post-it notes, a calculator, the textbook, or required reading. This is a lot of things to hold and carry and will be easy to spill. Many students are even still using the avid binders, a binder that is at least two inches thick. It has slanted slides, and it's a plastic material, and it makes things easy to fall off. In regards to carrying computers, backpacks provide a level of protection. They are protected against falls and bumps, disallowing backpacks will cause a risk for computers. I don't know how many of you have had middle school children, but they are not the most careful of people. Knowing that my child's backpack provides extra protection for his computer is a definite comfort, as fixing those required devices can get extremely expensive. Even using a protective sleeve does not protect 100% against falls. Thirdly, backpacks will force more girls to openly carry their purses in school. Most girls start their periods around this age and rely on backpacks to carry their supplies. They will have to rely on purses instead if backpacks are not allowed. And once girls are consistently always carrying purses, there is an added security risk. Backpacks have multiple compartments and pockets, making it easy to hide wallets and menstrual necessities. If girls are forced to carry purses, then their wallets and other personal belongings are at a greater risk for theft. Asking girls to keep their menstrual supplies in their lockers is unreasonable, as sometimes cycles are unexpectedly sudden and heavy, and a person needs access to those supplies immediately. Some students also store their student IDs in their backpacks. I know that with growing class sizes, there is a concern for space in classrooms and that backpacks decrease the amount of available space. Here are two options I have come up with to help with that issue. One, have students put their backpacks under their chairs, like I did when I was in high school, either under their knees or in front of them. Or have a designated area in the classroom where his backpacks can be left, like pile them up or something, I don't know. I appreciate the Student Advisors Committee on this from last board meeting, however, this is a proposal that affects mostly middle schoolers. As such, I think you should ask the advice of middle schoolers and their parents. Those are the voices that should be heard on this topic, as those students are the ones who will be impacted the most.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chen Cruz Martin.
Good evening. I'm here today to express my concerns regarding how an incident involving my son was handled, in hopes that the board will consider reviewing the district's current code of conduct. My son is an eighth grader at Bednarzic, and on Monday, March 3rd, he was pushed down a flight of stairs from behind, intentionally by another student. There was a staff member walking right next to them at the time of the incident, it is also on video. After he was pushed, the other student said, "That's what you get." The vice principal is the one who called me to inform me of the incident. I was told that my son reported to be okay, and that the school was taking it seriously. I was not asked if I wanted to come in to check on him myself, I was not asked if I wanted to speak with him on the phone. By the grace of God, my son was able to walk away, but did sustain injury. The offending student was suspended for three days. I was informed by concerned parents that this was a student that had a history of disorderly conduct and has put other students in physical and emotional danger. The fact that the assaulting student purposefully pushed my son from behind in front of a staff member shows he has no regard for adult supervision and intended to harm my son without consequence. Tuesday afternoon, the 4th, I went to the police station and filed an official report. The officers I spoke with asked me if the principal had informed me why the police were not called at the time of the incident. Another officer had asked me if I was told why an ambulance was not called to check, to make sure he was indeed okay. They told me that many schools will hold mediation between the parents, the students and both sets of parents, and that the school should be able to provide me with the other student's parents' contact information. I brought all of this to the principal Wednesday morning, the 5th. Mr. Oldacker, the principal, informed me that they only call the police when there is a severe situation. I asked if he could please explain to me what qualified as a severe situation, and was told that when students won't stop fighting or if an ambulance was needed. Mr. Oldacker told me with my permission he could give my contact information to the other student's parents. He neglected to respond to the part of potential mediation. I expressed to Mr. Oldacker that a three-day suspension was not sufficient for an incident that could have had much more serious consequences. He told me that the district agreed the code of conduct dictated the consequence based on a physical altercation, and because my son was not seriously injured, this is how it was classified. I have spoken with the principal, with the police, and with other parents. There is no question that this was an intentional act with potential for serious harm. The school's response has been severely underwhelming and inadequate for an action that could have paralyzed or even killed my son had he hit his head. I am bringing this to the attention of the board to bring to light how this matter was handled by the administration at Bednarzic, and in hopes that the code of conduct can be revisited. The consequences given should not be based on the end result, but must include the intent and potential harm. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, we're moving to 6.1, action items. Ready? Approval of strategic plan, action item 6.1. Can I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to approve the SD 308 strategic plan as presented. Second.
Ms. Simonton?
Aye.
Ms. Venman?
Aye.
Mr. Polgar?
Aye.
Dr. Maria?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
No.
Mr. Serrano?
Aye.
Mr. Gatewood?
Aye.
Motion passes six, two, and one, one no. 7.1, Superintendent comments. Want to ask that Dr. Calgari give the superintendent a report.
Thank you, Board. Tonight really marked some milestone, as we presented this final strategic plan for approval. We want to thank, on behalf of the community, the staff, the students, the cabinet, the senior leadership team, principals, educators, community members, we've had members of our village trustees, and we want to just thank you all so much for your support. This plan reflects shared visions shaped through extensive input from our students, staff, again, from families and community members. It's a forward-thinking guide. If you've had a chance to peruse it, I had a conversation with members of the Superintendent's Advisory Group a couple of weeks ago. Some of the things may surprise you. This book, this guide really is a, what I would describe as a foundational document. There are many things in here that you may think, "Oh, boy, why don't we have that yet?" Or, "Wait, that's not there yet?" And in fact, yes, some of the things that have been articulated in this document, everything from the way in which we think about our individualized education plans, to our curriculum renewal process, to the way we think about student information and data, these are all fundamentally things that we have opportunities to improve. And if you had a chance to review the curriculum audit from this past spring, I mean, past fall, in that document, it outlines a huge priority around planning, that the district really needed to invest time into planning its future steps, to move away from a practice of really moving, kind of, in an uncoordinated manner across its initiatives, and to really thinking about a long-term strategic plan. And so in this document, that I'm very proud of, it's really the collaborative work of our unions coming together. This evening, this really is a watershed moment, not for any one individual, it's really a team effort. And we want to thank the board for its vision and its support. This all started, if you remember, the strategic roadmap that we had last spring, and now we have a, was it a Mustang that I heard, a Chevy from our comments today? I don't know, we're not supposed to come in public comment, but we want to thank everybody involved in making this a reality. Tonight, what a joy to hear, to see, and to celebrate our pride recipients. It's always tremendous to center the excellent work and vision of our staff, and I want to thank our communications team for their help in coordinating this work. And we're coming off of a really exciting last week. We had a number of things, you'll hear board members make comments to them, but we welcomed the class of 2038. Yes, if you can believe it, 2038. I know. Right, you feel old, yes, yes. And their families at KinderQuest, we want to thank our staff for that. And then our students on Thursday evening shared their powerful stories and talent, tremendous talent, at our Amplify event, really celebrating the heart of our district. And we want to thank everyone who made these events possible. IAR testing is underway. What a wonderful way for us to measure the progress our students are making. We want to thank our staff and our administrators for coordinating. Also, last week, we completed the first round of math testing and navigated the new ADAM platform, and ELA continues this week. And again, big thank you to our staff for their hard work in preparing our students. Let's finish strong. This, today, actually, I had a chance to meet with chief consultants regarding our long-range facility plan. So, we've been referring to our master facility plan, and our consulting group, the white group, suggested today that we really start to shift towards the words "long-range facility plan," which actually makes more sense, right? Which is, we're thinking ahead of where we want to take our district in terms of our buildings. And so, we are going to be, we've engaged our leaders, we're going to be continuing to do that. We'll be bringing in our directors and then families, and really engaging them, thinking about what do we want to see in our buildings, both in terms of long-term care, but also in terms even learning spaces that we want to make sure they're excellent. Over the last couple of weeks, as we've transitioned into adopting some recommendations from our diverse learning's program, we've heard from a number of parents regarding the programmatic moves, the stress and the challenges, but also the joys. So we've had a variety of feedback. We recognize that this change will and does require a lot of communication, which I know our team is committed to increasing. And- And if you have particular challenges, we would encourage you to reach out to the program administrators as well as to the district staff. And I know that we are committed to ensuring that any changes, we always put our students first, and we continue to do that. As we celebrate our, the season of spring, which last week felt like summer, today it's winter, but we're almost there. A few special recognitions. We've got, we're in the spirit of things, we've got, we want to send warm wishes to our students and our families in the spirit of Ramadan. We have St. Patrick's Day, celebrating those who bring our Irish culture and heritage. We've got Noah Ruz for those who are Persians and Mahais, wishing happiness and health. And this coming week, we also have World Syndrome Day, which is March 21st. World, I'm sorry, World Down Syndrome Day. This, this gives us an opportunity. Students and staff may be wearing mismatched socks in honor of the incredible contributions of individuals with Down Syndrome, that is part of the tradition they have. And the 21st chromosome is triplicated in those with Down Syndrome. This important day promotes inclusion, understanding, and advocacy. Looking ahead, well-deserved spring break. Take the week off, everyone, at the end of this week, of course. And we hope everyone gets some time to rest and recharge, and gear up for the final stretch of the year. I always call it the new year on the end of this, so that we stay, you know, we jump in. And last but not least, we recognize that this is a great time also to give feedback when we think about celebrating our staff and our students. And the five essential surveys open, the time to really give feedback and with the participation of all our families to ensure that we can get the most accurate feedback and understand where we want to strengthen and also where we want to celebrate. And thank you to all for your insights. I apologize for my voice this evening, and I want to turn it over now to board members. And we have some additional news.
Okay, thank you. The Oswego Swimming and Diving Team recently earned ninth place at the IHSA Boys State Championships. Chase Meyer took home individual state titles in both the 200 and 500 free. Owen Lippold placed sixth in the 50 free and 15th in the 100 free. Ethan Schrader placed eighth in the 200 free and 10th in the 500 free. Congratulations. But wait, there's more. Moving on, out of the press. I want to give a shout out to our robotics team, Garrett Forward 2338, who, I want to make sure I get this right, who were the regional winners and received the championship qualifying award at the Rocket City Regional Finals this past weekend. Actually, I think it started Thursday through Sunday or something like that. But the important thing is, championship qualifying award. It says here, "The champions formed a powerful alliance who rose to the many challenges of ReefScape and proved to be an exciting and competitive combination. They can now proudly hang a winner's banner in their pit." Again, the robotics team does some really cool stuff, so they did a really great job and deserved the recognition. Mr. Polgar, over to you.
Yes, Kaya Chavez of Oswego High School placed second in her weight class at the IHSA Girls Wrestling State Final Tournament, so congratulations, Kaya.
And Mackenzie Mann of Oswego East High School was named the Regional Student of the Year in graphics at the 2025 Valley Education for Employment System Competition on Friday. Congratulations, Mackenzie.
The Benarsec Science Olympia Team took sixth place at the College of DuPage Regional Tournament, earning a bid to the Illinois State Tournament in April. Congratulations to these students from Benarsec Junior High School and the best of luck at State Tournament.
Our special, excuse me, our Special Olympics basketball teams had a successful run at State. The Wildcats junior team earned a silver, and the Wildcats silver team placed fourth. As individuals, Andrew Baz won gold, and Emmett Hulak received a participation award in skills. Congratulations Wildcats.
Thompson Junior High School had a successful 10th Annual Hoops for Heart Week led by their PE teachers. The school collected a total of $2,850 to be donated to the American Heart Association. Our district has cumulatively raised over $1 million to benefit the research of heart disease and stroke in local services to our community through the American Heart Association. Good job.
In March, we celebrate our school's social workers and athletic trainers. We are so appreciative of all they contribute to our buildings. Thank you to these special staff members.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President and Board, for the time to share those reflections.
All right, 7.2, Board Committee Reports. We'll start with our Equity, Learning, and Innovation Report. Who would like to start?
Equity, Learning, and Innovation met this month. We had several items that we discussed, including some of the changes to diverse learners in special education. We heard a presentation on backpacks and bell schedules from the junior high. We heard about a junior high novel selection, as well as a textbook selection for African-American studies at the high school level. We had a student join us to give us some updates about student engagement. And then we also reviewed Vision 2030, a board resolution from, from the state, or from the ISB. A lot of these items are on our agenda tonight, so we had a nice preview of them prior to the board meeting tonight.
I'll just, I'll just want to add one thing, and, sorry, I'm going to get semi-controversial. But I was late to the meeting, first of all, I'll start with that. For those that don't know, I'm my mother's primary caregiver, so sometimes it gets me and I'm late to places. But here's what I'm going to say, and I'm going to say my nickel's worth here. There's definitely a history in the district when it comes to moving programs, and I think we need to be fully aware that it's not a history that leaves people with a lot of good feelings. I am aware of an exception that was made last boundary. I remember it very well, because, like, I don't take a whole lot of credit for things, but it was definitely something that I had proposed in the middle of the board meeting, which was, when we had Thompson and Trauber switched, it was trying to see if those who had already started at one school could finish out. There wasn't added expense. It didn't just include gen ed students, but I do not believe it included necessarily everyone in those programs. I bring this up and I say this because when, I would argue that the last time we had to change boundary lines, we were very successful. And part of the reason we were very successful is because we made a commitment as a district that we were going to leave programs where they were. And when we couldn't, that's when we knew it was time to deal with the lines. And that's who we were going to revolve around, our most vulnerable students. That's equity work as opposed to equality work. And so I challenge us, and I challenge our district, and I, if this is really what we're having to do, that means we're behind on having to address some lines if we're really moving people. That's been the philosophy that we've had, we had last time. And so I challenge ourselves, including myself, right? I'm not, I'm not innocent, and I'm not going to claim to be innocent, and certainly not the reason for saying these things. But that's, that's a commitment to equity that we've made in the past. And I'm not going to sit here and blame a brand-new administration, but this is the part where the historical piece matters. We need to make sure we're keeping that historical piece intact, because we will have a negative reaction from some of our community when we forget it. So, I'd be amiss not to say those things.
Thank you. All right, and now our Policy and Legislation Committee Report.
That meeting was actually rather short. I think it was one of the shortest ones on record. Actually, we briefly discussed Policy 130. We just kind of went over a red line draft, which is going to be kind of redone for our next meeting. We tabled some meetings to the beginning of the next school year, or at least when the new board is in place. Probably what we talked about most was Policy 7150 regarding immigration enforcement and Policy 835 regarding law enforcement procedures. Both of those policies are being brought tonight for our first read, so you will have the chance to review them if you haven't done it already. But that was definitely at the forefront of our meeting.
Are we supposed to talk about a bill that's out there? Is that part of our deal?
We never picked one.
We never? Yeah, I don't remember the bill number, actually, but there's a lot of conversation about, I know the state contemplating mandating later starts for high schools, and I think that's fascinating. There's a district not too far from here, which is having the debate. And it's certainly been a fascinating watch, to say the least. A little bit of cart before the horse kind of going on over there, but nonetheless, it's going to be fascinating to watch to see what happens with it, and there could be implications for us down the road, certainly with transportation, but also you're talking activities and so forth, if that goes through. I think it's definitely something to keep an eye on, for sure.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to 7.3, Student Board Member Reports.
You want to take a moment to reflect on two recent events that truly showcase the power of student voice in our district. The Student Board Forum on March 3rd, and then our Amplify on March 13th. At the Student Board Forum, we had the opportunity to discuss some of the most pressing issues affecting students today, including phone use and its impact on respect and communication, students skipping class, censorship, academics, mental health, and homework. What stood out the most was not just the range of topics, but the depths of the conversations that we had. Students were engaged, honest, and willing to share their thoughts and concerns, and in return, we received amazing and positive feedback from those who attended.
Reminder that when we create space for open dialogue, real change can happen. One of the best parts of the forum was seeing students from different backgrounds and experiences come together to discuss solutions and advocate for what they need to succeed. It wasn't just about voice and concern, it was about collaborating to make better change for everyone. Then, on March 13th, we had Amplify, and it was truly something special. The energy in the room was inspiring from the incredible performances that showcased the creativity and the talent of our students, to the breakout room sessions that sparked meaningful conversations. One of the standout moments of the day was the student panel, where we got to hear unfiltered perspectives from students about their experiences, challenges, and hope for the future. The responses we received were overwhelmingly positive, with so many people expressing how powerful it was to hear students speaking the truth. It reinforced the idea of our voice matters, and that we need to continue creating opportunities like this for students to be heard. Another important theme throughout the day was rightful presence. The idea that every student belongs, that their identity and experiences should be recognized and valued in every space they enter. It's not just about being physically present in a classroom or an event. It's about being seen, heard, and respected. The decisions, the discussions we had at Amplify really highlighted the importance of creating environments where all students feel like they truly belong, whether that's in the classroom, in leadership, or in a broader school community. Both the Student Board Forum and Amplify shows how powerful it is when students come together, share ideas, express themselves, and push for positive change. It was amazing to see how engaged and passionate everyone was, and we hope to keep this momentum going. Let's continue to amplify our voices, our voices, oh my gosh, advocate for what matters, and work together to build a school community where every student feels valued and empowered. Thank you.
And just to add on to that, just to add on to that, it was so nice seeing junior high coalition at Amplify and what they prepared, it was so sweet. I don't know, something about it just touched my soul in a different way. Seeing young voices, like, starting at junior high, it was something truly amazing and so inspiring for even the future generation, so that was really good.
Good.
Thank you.
7.4, Board Member Comments.
I'll add, just to follow up to what they were saying. I didn't know that we had a classically trained pianist at the table. But Hallie Purnell, it was phenomenal. Like, not that I expected anything less, but Amplify was amazing. But it was, it was amazing. I appreciated the thoughtfulness. I learned so much in the breakout session, I liked the format and the flow of it all. But it was, it was great being present to hear the voices, but also to see all the amazing talent, especially the middle school students as well, it was a great touch, so, great job.
Thank you.
I'm going to add to the amazing piano performance. Mr. Gatewood and I kind of looked at each other halfway through and went, "Whoa." So, yes, you are extremely talented, but we knew that, and you're both very talented. I, well, you were both in my session.
Thank you so much. No, because I was so scared, because they had to take me out the breakout room early. They're like, "Hallie, the piano's broken, like, come here." I was running, I'm like, "Is it okay, is it okay?" Because I was so nervous before I was about to go on, but thank you, I appreciate it.
That was pretty amazing. The only thing I wanted to add, and I'm going to make this, I've gone through this in my head, I don't know how many times, but, as everybody should know by now, there's an election coming up, April 1st, local elections. You have far more of an impact in a local election than you would particularly, or during a national election. So, it's really important that you get out and vote, but do it with knowledge. As happens in every election, there are an awful lot of soundbites that are going out into the, into the atmosphere that are being taken as gospel without any context. And I emphasize "without any context", particularly, you know, budget numbers, I just, just, you know, so-and-so is whatever. Please be sure that you do your research, and don't blindly believe everything that you hear, because, because we know you're all smarter than that. So, that's it. Put things in context and vote.
So, we were on to 7.4, and then, so was that your 7.4 comment?
That was my comment, yeah. Well, I thought, I thought-
Yeah, we are on 7.4 now.
Okay.
I have a few things.
Yeah, let, go ahead, Amy.
I just wanted to, I probably should have said it earlier in the agenda when we voted on the strategic plan, but I feel like we're burying the lead here a little bit. So, we have, congratulations to everyone on, you know, having the strategic plan in place for the next several years. I think it's a great guiding document for the next several years and the work that we're doing. And I know we've said it before, but a deep appreciation for all the input from the community and from the administrators and those who led, you know, the creation and gathering of all that information to put together a strategic plan. I had, over the week, met with Dr. Kilgady just to ask a couple of questions on the strategic plan. And one of the things I said, just to kind of lift it up from the conversation, was, this is also a strategic plan where I'm hoping a lot of, we can memorialize a lot of procedures and a lot of processes as we go about doing the work. So, as we're going about renewing the curriculum, doing all these things, reviewing things, we have systems in place, so in the future when we need to do it again, we have them in place. And then I appreciated the conversation that we had, Dr. Kilgady, about, you know, thinking, like, this isn't the end, right? We're doing some building blocks for things we want to see in four years, and five years, six years, and down the road. So, not everything is in there, you know, that's ever going to happen in the district, but we're doing some good building blocks to make some other things happen in the future. And the last thing I'll say is, and I'll continue to bring this up, this is a living document. And so, it's not, as we said, something we're going to put on the wall, you know, and have a three-point strategic plan for the next three years, and we don't know what it is. It's something that I hope that we're digging into throughout the, you know, at every meeting as we think about the work that's ahead of us. So, congratulations to everyone on that.
I attended a few events, I just wanted to call them out. Grand Park Diversity Fair, packed with lots of people, wonderful displays of food and entertainment. I treated myself to a Lily Scrub and a T-shirt at the Spring Craft Show from the Pathways Transition Center. I attended Amplify, where I saw the talent and heard, you know, all the voices. It was moving, for sure. And then Steam Night a few weeks back, it's always a great turnout there. Lots of hands-on activities in science, technology, engineering, art, and math, so. I just wanted to call those events out, so that's it, yeah.
I had one more item that I wanted to say, and that was the five essential surveys, also out there, right, still, right? I don't know how many more.
Very much so.
But if you haven't filled out your five essentials, please know that our school improvement teams and lots of people are using that data to determine what moves to make in your school building. So a really important piece to put on your to-do list.
So when we first came to the board, almost four years ago, one of the things that we grappled with was the fact that we had a strategic plan and yet it was something that we couldn't really wrap our brains around. It was just, it was a lot. And although there were many, many voices included in that strategic plan, when you have a board and they represent the community and that, and we're out there assessing, what is it that our community wants? What is the vision that they have? And it's our voice that reflects that as we sit here. And so we were always thinking about, are we, is the, do we have the cart before the horse? Right? And we just, we couldn't get over the fact that our, our community was saying something and our strategic plan was saying so many things. And we just needed to put our fingers on those things that were most important to our community. And I feel like we finally got here. Like, you know, there have been many, many voices that reflect the strategic plan and all the changes that have gone into it. I mean, we've had the curriculum audit. We've had so, so many opportunities that our communications department has put together and sent out in the voices of our staff and our, and our students and our community. And so I am very confident that that strategic plan is a reflection of so many aspects of our, of our community and so many voices. And so I feel as though we are going in the right direction. We have the focus, we have the intentionality, we have the meaningfulness behind it. And so I'm, I'm very proud of, of, of the community, the staff. And I heard in so much of your voices, such enthusiasm for how this came together and the participation and why this strategic plan is so important and is the right way at the right time. So I just want to say thank you to Dr. Calgotti and your leadership for all the administrators, for our staff, for our students and every, and our community who's participated in this, in this, what is a beginning, right? It's a living, breathing document, as Amy said. It's not something to be put up on a wall. We're, we're holding you accountable for it. In your evaluations, we're holding our, our buildings accountable in their school improvement plans. We're holding our administration accountable, and I'm so excited to see how, how, how we go forward. So that's my, that's my two cents. Okay, on to our consent agenda. Eight point one, can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, please?
Make a motion to approve all items under consent, including eight point one minutes from the Board of Education meeting on February twenty fourth, two thousand twenty-five, open and closed session, and from the student-led public forum on March third, two thousand twenty-five. Eight point two, to acknowledge FOIA requests received by the district. Eight point three, to approve the field trip for overnight and/or over two hundred miles. Eight point four, to acknowledge the two thousand twenty-six prom vendor for O E H S. And eight point five, to approve the two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six membership to the Illinois High School Association for both Oswego and Oswego East High School.
Second.
I have one question. On eight point four, which is the acknowledgement of the twenty twenty-six vendor for Oswego East, do we typically, we typically don't approve that. I think I heard somewhere that this is because there was a change in venue, and so I recognize it's just an acknowledgement, but I'm just trying to.
Now, we normally, we've never approved this. The board has never approved that. But technically speaking, the board should approve it under consent.
Oh, okay.
Because any activity, any transaction that is engaged in, in the district has to be approved by the governing board.
Okay. So moving forward, we should see.
Yes, it's a change in practice.
All right, thank you.
I also have a comment on the meeting minutes from the student forum. It lists my name at the bottom. Final resolution, motion carried six zero. It should not be on there. I was not, I was absent.
I will amend that. I'll amend it. So, okay. Yeah, he needs to share it. Just to say, just make a motion to amend the minutes from the public forum as discussed.
Make a motion to amend the minutes from the student-led public forum on March third, two thousand twenty-five as discussed.
Second.
Mr. Gatewood?
Aye.
Dr. Maria?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Serone?
Aye.
Ms. Simulton?
Aye.
Mr. Plogar?
Aye.
Ms. Venmouth?
Aye.
So that motion passes seven zero. Okay, now here we go.
Oh, his first motion was already seconded.
Okay, no, yeah. So the motion passes seven zero. Okay, now.
Ms. Venmouth?
Aye.
Dr. Maria?
Aye.
Mr. Serone?
Aye.
Ms. Simulton?
Aye.
Mr. Gatewood?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Plogar?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Okay. Good evening, board. We've got a number of items this evening. Nine point one, renewal of the state waiver for show choir. We have a presentation. I thought there was a, okay. Any questions regarding, maybe that's the more important thing. Okay, all right. Next, we have our illustrious team coming up. We want to thank you all for joining us this evening. I'll turn it over to Dr. Paul to, to lead us in. All right, while we're getting ourselves pulled up here, do you want to introduce, have everybody introduce themselves? And we will thank you all for joining us again this evening.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Megan Mann. I'm the Director of Humanities.
I'm Kristen Walsh. I'm on the ELA District Committee for ELA, and I'm an eighth grade ELA teacher at Murphy.
I'm Jill Bean. I'm also on the ELA Committee, and I do seventh and eighth grade ELA at Plank.
Hi, I'm Maggie Sadler, also on the Junior High ELA Committee, and I teach ELA at Benarsec.
Laura Bingham, also on the ELA Committee, and I'm the Principal at Murphy Junior High.
See you guys all wearing the green.
I mean, we could have had Kelly playing the piano in the interim.
Yeah, go ahead and start the slide. They have the document, so yeah.
If we start, let's do it. All right. So we are really excited to come to tonight and bring forth junior high novels. Our team has been working really hard the entire year. It aligns with our high-quality instruction priority and with our equity and engagement, equity and rightful presence priority. And we are excited to talk as a team about the work that's happened this year. I'm going to pass it down. All right, so this is the junior high curriculum team. Some of us are here. It's basically made up of staff members from the junior highs in all aspects, general, multilingual learners, special education. We also had the equity engagement and learning and innovation TOSSAs part of the team as well. So we've really worked hard together to try to, to get the voices from all of the buildings, use voices from our students in order to make sure that we're making the best decisions for our kids.
So the committee started a pretty rigorous process last spring when we had the HMH adoption of the new curriculum, and we looked at what the novel options were and where, as teachers, we thought would be the best place to put our core novels. We started with the list they gave us and narrowed it down, made selections on what we wanted to look at and read a bunch over the summer. So we all took home novels over the summer to read and come back this year to put together. We then completed the text review process, which was a lot of documenting everything in a book that someone could look at potentially sideways, and the awards they've received, how we could teach content through these novels. We made recommendations to the building principals, and then we invited students to read the books. We asked for volunteers, some we bribed. They read many of the books, and they had two opportunities to give feedback through Google Form or in panels with some district admin, some of the TOSSAs, building admin and teachers. Amazing conversation that you'll hear about a little bit later in the presentation. Then we presented to the equity and engagement team just last week, the novel presentation. And the ELA Committee also met with all the junior high principals to field their questions and get their input. We are bringing forward three novels this month to you as the board to propose. And then once this presentation happens tonight, they'll be on for public view for thirty days. And we'll continue working after that and hopefully get approval.
Okay, there was so much work done with reviewing the novels and selecting, starting with what HMH provided as guidance for us, and then looking at standards, integration, alignment with summative assessment and tasks, looking at student engagement, social, emotional learning, culturally responsive teaching and learning standards. You'll hear some more about the student voice, but even asking them about how could this be used academically in your course, as well as our educators' perspective on how these novels can benefit our students in the classroom, and that they had a lot of student engagement interest involvement and were very well reviewed. And that was thoroughly covered through the text review process and all of the collaborative meetings.
In the junior high ELA classroom, we use novels in a couple of different ways. One is a core text. With the core text, every student in the course reads that and students complete a summative assessment. We also have choice texts. The choice texts can, can be read within the whole group. It is often used within literature circles. Sometimes the teachers choose those choice texts. Sometimes the students choose those choice texts. They can be on interests, readability, content, lots of different reasons we might choose a choice text. The benefit of a core text novel is it creates a foundation and a point of reference for teachers because we know that all of the students in that grade level have read that novel. So tonight, we are proposing three novel, three core novels for approval. So those are Out of My Mind by Sharon Draper at the sixth grade level, The Hunger Games by Suzanne Collins at the seventh grade level, and Miss Peregrine's Home for Peculiar Children by Ransom Riggs at the eighth grade level. So we collected data from our students in two modalities. One was using a focus group after they all read the novels, and the second was a survey. And we had, as you can see in our sixth grade, the book Out of My Mind, recommended by our students through both survey and focus group, was a hundred percent of our students. And they thought it was age-appropriate and had literary value. If you notice some of the comments, these are direct quotes that our students said. "Out of my mind helps others learn that some people are not the same as you." And I love that it shows a different perspective on how Melody feels about how people treat her and how she achieves her goal to be in the competition. And we have some very excited sixth grade readers that said, "I read for two straight hours." And it keeps you reading with suspense at the end of every chapter. So our sixth graders unanimously voted yes for Out of My Mind by Sharon Draper. Then our second book for seventh grade was The Hunger Games, as you can see by our focus group and surveys. Also a unanimous yes, a hundred percent of our students said that they would highly recommend this book for our seventh graders. And again, this book is my favorite ever. And we had to make sure that that was in all caps. It was how it was written. It grabs you in and it is hard to stop reading. A well-written book. You can see the author took a lot of time to write this book. As the characters are well-written, the plot of the story and theme are great. Not too much violence. It's perfect for kids my age. So that's our seventh grade voices. And our eighth grade students read Miss Peregrine's Home for Peculiar Children. Again, a unanimous one hundred percent said they would recommend this book for our eighth grade students. "It's suspenseful and mysterious," they said, "and the beginning was a little slow." And we talked through that and how we could, you know, go around that. But around page one hundred, I couldn't put it down. So, you know, they just had to persevere through. And this book was really good. The amount of horror and adventure was just right. I feel like every chapter I read, it was getting better and better. I absolutely loved the concept. And I love this book and would recommend it for any student to read it. So this is the voices of our sixth, seventh and eighth grade students. Again, unanimously, all recommending all three of these books.
You want a really good time. You do book study talks with students. It's a lot of fun. The projected implementation plan, this novel work is in stage two of our curriculum renewal cycle. We are in the planning and development and evaluating stage right here. So the team, upon approval, will in April, in May, work on finalizing all of the sports around the use of these novels for educators, getting them in their hands. And then knowing that in August, we need dedicated time right off the bat at the beginning of the year for our junior high ELA teachers, as well as a checkpoint in the fall during some professional learning time that's available and to be really intentional about that. Okay, so the projected budget, it actually is included in our contract. We have an annual multi-year contract with HMH. So the only cost that we are looking for approval for would be for the barcode cost so that it can be integrated into our system. So we are very pleased to present these junior high novels to you. Again, taking your input as a board and involving our students in the process. And we're delighted to hear their perspective, as well as our teachers, and recommending these novels for information this evening. Do you have any questions?
I just have.
I just have...
What in eighth grade, what to honor as eighth graders? Because you're leaving a year ahead. What do the eighth graders read?
They have a nice school curriculum?
Oh, they do. Okay.
Yeah. They read what the ninth grade, English one, to the third.
Okay. And that's already done?
That is in the high school mini-curriculum renewal. That coursework is being done there. They did not change a novel yet, but they may propose one in the next year.
Okay.
When I was in honors, when I was in honors one, we went, we read, oh wow, we read Lord of the Flies, To Kill a Mockingbird, Animal Farm, and then one other book, I forget. But that's the books we read, just in case.
Were all freshmen?
Eighth grade. Because I was in honors English one my eighth-grade year. But that's what would the freshmen be reading if they were...
Wow, okay.
You didn't read something? I read, I mean, that would be separate. I put in honors...
So, so I have a... It's not a serious question. So, I want to go back to the book that was slow to get into. Was that Game of Thrones?
No.
Oh, no. I mean, I'm not a Game of Thrones fan, so I don't know. But anyway, that wasn't my question either.
Hunger Games.
Hunger Games. That's right.
No, it was Miss Peregrine.
Yeah, I was close. My ultimate question is, how many pages is the book? I mean, like, if it takes 100 pages and it's like 300, that's one. If it's 106 pages, I have an issue.
No, I think it's closer to 300.
Okay. So, there's still a significant amount of...
Oh, there's a significant amount. And they actually brought up some instructional strategies we could do in order to improve, you know, the likability, I guess, of the beginning.
The students brought it up?
So, they did, yep. They brought up some strategies we could use in the classroom to help the students along.
Great. Okay. Thank you.
It's also probably a third pictures. There's a lot of pictures, old photographs, in the eighth-grade book.
Okay.
The first 100 pages.
So, okay. So, what my teacher does was she would play the movie to kind of have us like a better comprehension. But my concern was, like, some, when I was looking them up, the movies were rated like PG-13, and I know some parents don't like their children watching that at that age, like mine didn't. So, what would you do about that? Like, a parent wasn't comfortable with them watching the movie to engage better in the book?
There would not, at this time, be the intention to use the movie. It could be that, you know, clips, but that, there's always parental consent around that if there's ever a movie, you know, that we're... Yeah. But right now, there's not that intent.
Okay. Thank you.
I saw the word must. That must read?
Must read.
Yeah. On one of those pages, on one of those slides at the beginning. So, these are must-read books? Like, this is the book that every student is going to read?
Yeah. So, this would be a core novel.
Okay. So, what if a parent doesn't want their student to read that book? Do they have a choice, an option?
So, with, same as with the high school novels, where if there's ever a need for an opt-out, then the teacher and the parent work together. They look for an alternative text that allows them to complete the same summative assessments, types of activities. That's something, yeah, many skills that ELA and high school English teachers are very... And so, to add on to that, the way the curriculum maps are designed is that they're aligned to standards, which are aligned to summative assessments. And so, if a parent were to ask for an alternative text that was part of the review process, we ask the teachers to think about alternative texts that still meet the standards. And so, that would give the parent an option to have their child read something in addition or in place of the core text.
But that's not what the choice texts are.
No. The choice text is different. There are many options for kids to pick from. The core text is different.
Is this a, just for some context, was the process different this time? I love the anchoring of student voices. That's something that came up earlier when we were looking at some novel study. And so, I'm just curious if this process changed at all, or what changed? If you don't mind just sharing some reflections?
So, just to echo what we said earlier, we did take your feedback about involving students in the review process, and that was actually very timely because I think the next day, there was a meeting with, of these ladies who were able to quickly identify the process to include students and be really representative of the student body. Anything else you would add?
I know that as a committee member, we looked at lots of novels, particularly with that HMH offered, because this is already built into our contract with HMH. And so, we had pretty lengthy discussions on where we wanted our, not the core novel to fall within, you know, a school year, within our classes. We felt, you know, the experience of doing a core novel was important for students to participate in within first semester. So, then that kind of dictated what units we were looking at for pulling our core novel, and additionally with the interest level. So, I, we set some standards, I would say, and this was started at the end of last year, starting to look at the novels, and something that all of the grade levels wanted to agree on for those similar experiences across the different grade levels.
To address, I think you're asking, a past process as well. In the past, I don't think we had as many options as to what we could pick, having been on multiple curriculum adoptions. I age myself. But in the past, it was, hey, we can get one of these two books, which do you like better? What can you bring the skills through the most with? And it was adopted pretty quickly. There wasn't as much process involved.
Thank you.
I will add that I'm really happy that you're adding, what's the book? Hunger Games. No, Hunger Games. No, Hunger Games. I'm really happy that you're adding that book because me and Kelly actually led a breakout room in Amplify for censorship, and we were talking about specific books that were banned in specific states. And I was talking about 1984. So, seeing you add another dystopian book into the curriculum, I think is just tremendous. So, props on that.
Okay. Anything else, team? Well, we want to thank you for your leadership and centering of our students' needs, and also your excitement, right? Because ultimately, if you all aren't interested in the books where teachers, educators are, then it's not going to be much. So, your commitment to the process and dedication really means a lot to us. So, thank you all.
Actually, can I add one thing?
Yes.
My first experience as a board member was an ELA curriculum adoption. So, I remember that piece, and I think it's ironic here on my way out, we're talking books and so forth. So, I like think I'm leaving how I'm starting, and definitely happier faces, so good to see you. I'm bookending it.
Next up, we have our High School African-American Studies textbook selection, and nothing could be more timely in today's context. So, I want to thank you all for your leadership. And Dr. Paul, take it away.
Good evening, everyone. I am delighted to share with you our recommendation for AP African-American Studies textbook. I have a committee here representing the different individuals who are part of this review process, that we're going to have them introduce themselves right now. You know who I am, Kristin Powell, Assistant Superintendent of Learning Innovation.
Good evening again. Megan Mann, Director of Humanities.
Hello, Ray Wan, Tanya Sharp, Assistant Principal for Curriculum and Instruction at Oswego High School.
And I'm Jennifer Kito. I'm the OHS Social Studies Department Chair.
So, as we transition and give you an overview of... Thank you. As we did in our last presentation, we know this is in alignment to our strategic roadmap of wanting to identify rigorous and ambitious instruction, as well as high-quality instruction text selection. And you heard a little bit about who is here presenting this evening. We do have some team members. Ms. Mann is going to give you an overview of who was involved in this conversation. We had a fantastic team, made up of our Assistant Principals of Curriculum Instruction, our department chairs, and the social studies departments from both high schools, and three social studies teachers. All three teachers are invested in this course, and they are so excited about its development. And so, this whole team met together to go through the timeline. We started with the proposal. Thanks for moving forward, letting us adopt this course into our curriculum and our course catalog back in October. November was spent researching textbook options. College Board recommends, but does not designate a textbook. And so, requesting copies, getting them all sent to us so the team could really dig into them. And then, in January and February was when we engaged in that process with the whole group there, looking at three textbooks that were options, and also going through curriculum document development for the course. And the instructors, those three teachers, did some preliminary professional learning around the course. And now, we are in March. We have our recommendation ready for you that we are so excited about. It will be on display for 30 days, and then we'll move for approval in April. Following that, our teachers are signed up for summer institute work specifically for this course, and we will be working on finalizing all those curriculum documents. The team has already been continuing that work. So, as we met as a group, we focused heavily on alignment to those Illinois State Standards for History and the College Board requirements.
Okay. Yeah. You're great, Megan. So, as with all texts, right, we are looking at how does that text align to the curriculum and the state standards? So, in this case, it's Illinois State Standards for History, and then, in addition to the many College Board standards and alignment, which include the standards for AP African-American Studies specifically. It also includes the College Board, Board's course and exam description, in addition to the content overview and course skills. And then, also with all of that, we're also aligning to the social-emotional learning standards, as well as the CRT standards as well, in addition with any ancillary materials that we are looking at to support what is in the text as well.
So, listed here are the three textbooks that we looked through. All three are currently used by AP African-American Studies teachers, and all three incorporate the scope and sequence that we needed for this particular AP course. So, the one that we wanted to recommend for approval was Freedom on My Mind, which is this one here, if anybody wants to look at it. But five teachers are the ones who wrote this textbook, two of which actually wrote the AP African-American Studies course for the College Board. So, it has the appropriate scope and sequence from ancient Africa all the way to the modern-day African-American experience. It is a holistic text. That was very important to us. We wanted to choose one that was not just a history book. This is not a history course. This is a studies course. So, we wanted to make sure it incorporated art, literature, geography, science, all the other aspects. It incorporates vocabulary terms that are needed for the AP exam, AP exam tips and tricks, reviews after each chapter. And one thing that was also important to us is that the other two books that we looked at were very dense, and they're all college books, so we get that. But this one particularly is chunked well, for each chapter is chunked into sections, which I think makes it a little more readable for the high school student. So, this is the one that we are recommending today.
So, the work that has been done thus far, we are going to be moving from the planning and development stage, which is where we have been this year, into the implementation stage for next year, when the course will be running for the very first time at both high schools. We're very excited about that. As Megan had mentioned, our three teachers have already attended a small training, and they'll be attending the AP Summer Institute, which is a four-to-five-day, all-day training. So, they'll be a week long over the summer, where they will be really delving in even more beyond what they're already doing themselves this year, and they will be able to collaborate with other teachers and a College Board staff from across the state of Illinois, possibly other states as well. So, we're going to be finishing, working on planning for the course to be ready for the fall, and that will continue throughout the summer as well.
So, the projected cost, you can see we have a six-year cost or a four-year cost for a review. This is also in alignment with having one section at each high school. We also know that there is the hardcover, that copy of text that we have here, if you'd like to check it out. Also, we have digital access, which allows students to be able to practice the AP questions and get feedback, interactive, especially as you heard, very interdisciplinary text, having artwork and maps, along with the print material as well. And it also covers the teacher manual. Thank you so much for your time this evening. Do you have any questions about this text selection?
You said this is going to be on display for 30 days.
Can you pass the book?
It will be indoor one. We will have both this textbook, as well as the junior high novels for the community to review. We'll have a QR code for people to provide us feedback. I'll be monitoring that, and if anyone provides us feedback, I'll be following up with them to thank them for their feedback.
Perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just a statement. I said this the other day in the committee meeting, but I appreciate that you all made a statement, and I want to underscore it, that this is not a history course, but a studies course. And what I also appreciate about the textbook, I have not read it, of course, but I've, you know, browsed it and looked at the table of contents, and I appreciate the fact that it does start in the origins, well before, you know, the 1400s, back in Africa, through the transatlantic slave trade. But I just appreciate it that it was truly a study and not just a history book. And so, I will continue to, you know, look in, look into the book a little bit deeper. But I also appreciated you all sharing that there will be additional, I don't want to say text, but additional supplemental material that will be used in order to help enhance the learning experience of the students. So, thank you.
When you onboard a new book, how do you get the students interested in it? Like, how, so this is going to be new, right? No one's ever taken it before. How do you make sure that there's enough participation, that the interest is high? How does all that work?
For the course.
For the course.
Sure. I mean, it really started with promoting the course. I mean, as soon as the course was approved in October, students were signing up for classes in November. So, we had about four weeks to really promote this course, and we do that in a variety of ways. The, I know that the social studies department goes into other courses. We collaborate with other department chairs. There are slide decks that are put together that teachers share with their students. We host a explore-your-potential event for any student that would be interested in learning more about the courses that we, the AP courses that we offer. And so, we had some brochures there where we were promoting the course, talking about the course. Again, Jen being there, not having ever taught the course before, but we were learning as much as we could, as fast as we could, in order to be able to share what being, what the experience might be like being in this course. So, obviously, there will be a learning curve with the teachers teaching it for the first time, and the students experiencing it for the first time. But one of the things that we talk a lot about in our courses is student feedback, right? Is, is, is what our lesson structure looks like? Is, how is that working for you? How are our students receiving that? And getting feedback from our students in order to then change or adjust and plan our lesson design. So, there'll be a lot of push and pull there, and give and take, and working with our students, because we definitely want this to be a very positive experience for, for everyone. Thank you.
Can I make one other comment? One other thing I just noticed in the table of contents is that this is an American history class with a focus on the implications of African-American impact to that, Civil War, Revolutionary War. I'm reading it, but I just appreciate the fact that it's, it's pretty inclusive.
I don't know what pages it is in the textbook, but it is in the very beginning. There are two students who, it's a full page up there of how they've experienced the course with the textbook. So, if you're looking for a student testimonial, there are two of them in the textbook in the very beginning.
And I've worked with the three teachers that are actually working on planning on this course, and they, I have to, I want to say how excited they are to launch this class. They, I feel like they are the right people. They will... They will elicit excitement for this class. They're going to be very purposeful in how they plan this and they've already talked about working with teachers from other departments to make sure that they get that studies, you know, holistic approach. So we're just, I don't know, I just, I'm very excited about this class. I think it's good, it's going to build up and it's just going to be great.
I'd like to make a comment. This is a really good class. I'm glad that we're putting it into our curriculum. I would urge that counselors or people that are like presenting new courses that are coming up also take heed to this one and kind of promote it just as much as they would promote other classes as well. Because oftentimes, like I was like a freshman seminar leader, so I would go through classes that freshmen could take or courses that they could sign up for. But sometimes I found in some of my classes, counselors would kind of just breeze through courses and not really talk in detail about what the course is providing and what it can benefit the student. So especially with a new class such as AP African American Studies, I would really urge that counselors take a really positive approach and kind of talk in depth about this course and how it can benefit not just people of color, but everyone as well taking this course. I would just.
And with the leaders explaining to the, that's what we did, like when I was a freshman, the leaders would tell us like, oh, here are the core classes and these is what they take. But I feel like as years go on, you tend to forget what classes you can actually take. So I feel like reacknowledging that this class and the importance of it, I feel like it really brings in new people to have, to have in the class.
Well, I think you may have board members trying to audit the course, so let's make sure there's a, there's a cap on the number of board members to try to, you know, we'd have forum and then we have a whole nother problem. Thank you very much for your.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Just let us know when registration is.
Mr. Obafemi tried to charge you off. Mr. Obafemi, I want to invite your team up.
So I'm actually before the teams start speaking, I'm excited to, to talk about this RFP. Over the years, we've always bought our computer devices when we do our yearly refresh from City W. And for the first time in anyone's memory, we decided to actually do an RFP for this. So instead of buying from City W, the units of devices that we buy, we develop an RFP, we send it out, we got some pretty good response. Just doing that, doing that. It's saving us 334,775. So if folks are asking where all this savings coming from, that's an example of that.
It's a daily occurrence.
Yeah. And to make it even more exciting, we actually again the service that we normally wouldn't get from City W with the white glove service, right? So this is, this is, I'm really excited about this. So I'll pass it on to Brent and.
Good evening. Tonight, we are here to answer any questions in regard to the memo for the recently posted computing device RFP, specifically as it pertains to purchasing student Chromebooks. For the past few years, we have purchased Chromebooks for the one-to-one program for fifth and ninth graders and usually an elementary grade level for the classroom carts. This year, we are looking to do the same. From the RFP, we had seven vendors respond. After evaluating the whole package, the vendors provided, we are recommending that we award the purchase of 4,430 devices to Bloom. The plan would be to use a three-year lease with the yearly payments from the technology budget and prepare the devices over the summer for distribution at the start of the new school year. Short and sweet, are there any questions?
And the other part of that Brett left out is that once we decide to lease, we actually negotiated pretty hard to get best pricing with the lease term too. So that saved us additional money. Those are the things that we've been doing in the district, save money.
Can, can you explain again, just because maybe I didn't hear it all, how we're saving this boatload of money? Oh, okay, so.
Because in the past, we bought from.
Oh, okay.
So if we bought it from that vendor.
Because we bought it from whoever.
City W and City W knew they did not have to be competitive.
Got it.
Because we, they assume we always buy from them. And they actually responded to the RFP. The price they offer was significantly higher than.
Shocking.
So.
Shocking, thank you.
Questions for them?
Appreciate the effort.
Yeah, we thank you all.
Great.
Anytime to save and get better products.
And for teachers?
Yes, yes. Okay. Thank you all. Mr. Obafemi, we have our financial update.
So I just, this is our monthly financial. We went through the, and the financial, the revenue and the expenditures to where we are compared to where we were last year. And there's really no significant variance. We are where we should be for this time of the year. And so if you look at the. Can, can we? I don't have the ability to move the. Next page, please. Thank you. So if you look at it, attempt just to compare where we were at the end of February of 2024 to where we are now. And there are no significant variances. So we're where we should be. So this is on the revenue side. If you look at the percentage that we projected, where we need to be for revenue and total revenue, local as well as state sources, we are right on where we need to be. Now, the only place where you see a slight variance will be in the federal revenue. And I think I'd mentioned that last month, we lost a big chunk of revenue source with the federal government in that last year we had Esser funding. Esser ran out in September of last year, so we're missing that revenue. On the expenditure side too, we're pretty much where we need to be. Now, if you look at the other object, there's a variance there that's significant, and that was just timing of payment on, on bond payment, outstanding bond payment. So that's, that's that. So there's nothing that's out of the ordinary financially where we are compared to where we should be for this time of the year. And I wanted to point out in your package, you see the fund balance. Now, at the end of February, we have 66.5 million cash on hand. And that should take us through the, the end of the fiscal year without us having to borrow money or do anything like that. So we're in good shape. But one thing I would like to point out, if you look at it, I can't say enough about it, transportation, we already have a negative fund balance of 4.6 million dollars. And so that is one area that we really need to focus on. And I know I've mentioned it a number of times, we would need to do something differently with transportation because over the long haul, it's just not sustainable and we are working. And if you remember, it's one of our strategic plan item to, to reimagine transportation and to do it operationally better than we're doing it right now. So investment at the end of the month, we had $59 million, which is, you know, which is pretty much where we should be. And the only other thing I would like to point out will be the CPI. Now CPI for the month of February came in at 20 basis points compared to January. January was 50 basis points, so inflation's actually gone down a bit, which is very helpful. So for the 12 month from February of 24 to February of 20, of 25, total CPI is 2.8%. And then I, I proceeded to break down what, what drove down CPI increase in the memo. So gasoline price, as we knew, went down by quite a bit. But the, the important thing that is driving the increase, electricity and natural gas, which is a big part of what we spend money on. So we will fill that in our expenditure moving forward. And I believe that's about it. Danny, then we also showed activity funds balance from all our schools as well as the fee collection rates. And as you can see, compared to last year, we are collecting significantly lower amount of fees and we are just not getting folks to pay the way they did last year. Any questions?
Can I ask why we don't see the bill pay list anymore?
The bill pay list is actually there. There's approval of bills for payments right there. It's under action. It's okay. Any other question about?
Questions for Mr. Obafemi?
Thank you.
No, thank you.
The next item is the vending machine RFP. And that was something else we found out that we had vending machine in the two high schools. And no one can figure out if we have a contract. No one can figure out if we got any revenue from their vending machines. So it's just kind of being a freeloader process. So what we decided to do is do an RFP for that too. And we received a submission from a pretty reputable firm. And what I'm happy to share is that as part of the process, the winning bidders agreed to share 30% of the revenue that they generate with us. So that will be part of our local revenue that we can then use for other things.
When you say the, the winner has agreed, that makes me assume that the current vendor is not providing revenue sharing. Is that correct?
We're not even aware of a contract.
So they're just vending machines in the buildings?
Yes, and no one can tell us.
Do they, do we own them or does someone else own?
No, it's a third party person that owned it. So.
So this is.
I guess years ago, they negotiated a deal and that has been in existence. So as part of the, just to do the diligence that we're doing to look at ways to strengthen the district financially, we did some research into the vending machine and we couldn't really figure out, we couldn't find that a contract that existed.
Do we know the vendor that we, that?
The current vendor. So we decided to do an RFP and asked them, and of course they didn't submit it.
Was this the only submission?
So we got one submission and the submission that we got is from a very reputable, we actually did reference checks on them. And we included a copy of the RFP there. And one of the things that they agreed to is, as I mentioned before, 30% of the revenue that it generates, nonprofit, the revenue that it generates will be shared with us.
And is that in addition to the scholarships that they're offering and the staff appreciation and the modern equipment?
Yes.
So the 30% is only just the gross sales, but then they also offer scholarships and staff appreciation?
Yes. That's what happened when we set up the table and we negotiate terms are favorable to us instead of people taking advantage of us.
Was, for example, the scholarship contribution and like the extras, like the cauldron staff on teacher appreciation week, is that something that they included in there? So they, did we any, in any way prompt those ideas in that, or is that something that they just know because maybe they've worked the schools, it would sweeten like their proposal?
We just try to make sure we get a good deal.
Got it. My, my other question is, within the process of evaluating this, I know that 30% of all gross sales will be coming to us as a revenue share. Are there prices comparable or are students going to be paying, you know, like $5 for a candy bar or something?
See, from a business standpoint, that's, that's an excellent question. From a business standpoint, the vending company, they want to make money.
Yeah.
If they price themselves too high, kids are not going to buy stuff from there. They'll just bring it from home or they'll buy it after school. So they have to be competitive in order for them to be able to have a significant revenue because they're in the business to make money.
Is there any, well, obviously we'll get to see monthly what they're doing, right? What they're generating?
Yes.
And are there opportunities to put more vending machines in the buildings, like in more places?
Yes. We, we, we talked to them about the option to do that and they were very interested in doing that.
Are you talking about more locations within the high schools or in other schools?
I think both, in the high school, in the middle school and other places in the district.
And do they have like some healthy choices and?
Oh, yeah. We actually, we included that in the RFP requirement. We tried to tie it up to the USDA, what they require. We want them to just send a bunch, sell us a bunch of junk for our kids.
Very good.
I just, real quick, these are the kind of things that reinforce faith in, in, in the system, right? And I mean, I can go back and think of some times when there were board members who were voting against things just because they were upset because they didn't really have faith in what they're being told or what was being done and so forth. So I want to remind again, it's, it's just, it's just really important to have quality staff and also staff that feels supported as well, but it's a two-way street. So thank you.
Thank you.
And I just want to, I just want to piggyback onto that. I mean, it, it fascinates me, like the last two presentations have been significant savings and/or significant revenue. And not to say that they're easy fixes because they're not, but in, in a lot of respects, they were kind of obvious fixes that should have at least been addressed like long ago. So to that extent, yeah, thank you. Just it's, there's so much low hanging fruit or so much potential out there to save money. I think it's, I think it's great that you and your team are turning them all over and taking advantage of them.
Thank you. I think to a great extent, the board has empowered us to be able to do this. So I really think the, the appreciation goes to the board that allows us to be able to do this.
I appreciate you saying that, but I'm going to volley it back over to you. Because it's one thing for us to empower you, it's another thing for you to actually do it. So thank you.
Okay, any more questions? I know, Mr. Obafemi, thank you and thank you to your team.
Very much.
Um, next, I want to invite Dr. Kincaid. We are bringing to the board a Vision 2030 Board Resolution. Dr. Kincaid has worked very closely in helping facilitate and lead the process for the strategic plan as well as a strategic roadmap. And part of that, we've been thinking about this resolution that's been brought to our attention by our partner districts. Let's all turn it over to Dr. Kincaid.
Yep, so this resolution is basically on behalf of the Illinois State Board of Education. This resolution is being asked to be passed by all school boards across the state. As we've discussed in committee and you can see in the information provided, it very much does align with our strategic plan. The Vision 2030 centers around keeping students safe, keeping high quality educators in front of students, enhancing post-secondary success and improving measurement of what is working. So we just wanted to bring this for information today. There is additional information available through board docs and then we would be bringing the resolution to our next meeting.
Okay, just really to reinforce, I want to thank you for that. We, we decided that it would have been, when you look at the content, as she said, I'll just reinforce that, just to look at the content of both and you crosswalk, there are just so many themes that there was no demarcation where we thought we needed to make a big change. We definitely made sure that we prioritize them within our plan. Everything from the strategic, from allocations, our resources, evidence-based funding, the commitment to that, how we use our resources and any differences we felt were within our scope and sequence. So. So we look forward to the board's feedback. And, uh, Dr. Kincaid, back to you again, uh, or any committee members regarding the policies for first reads, section seven.
Absolutely. Um, as we heard in our board committee updates, um, while we discuss multiple policies, um, at our policy and legislative meeting, the two that we are bringing for first read are both seven one fifty and eight thirty-five. Uh, the red line version for seven one fifty is included with your materials. These are recommendations on behalf of our legal review. The additional language does align with our current, um, S D three oh eight practice. And then our inclusion of eight thirty-five is a new policy, again, at the recommendation of our legal review.
Questions?
Any questions?
Okay.
Moving on to ten point one, action item, approval of bills for payment. Can I have a motion?
Make a motion to authorize the payment of bills in the amount of four million three hundred seventy-nine thousand eight hundred twenty-seven dollars and twelve cents as presented.
Second.
Ms. Simulton?
Aye.
Ms. Venmus?
Aye.
Mr. Plogar?
Aye.
Dr. Maria?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Serone?
Aye.
Mr. Gatewood?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. Action item ten point two, approval of student rights and responsibilities handbook. Can I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to approve the student rights and responsibilities handbook as presented.
Second.
Ms. Venmus?
Aye.
Mr. Gatewood?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Serone?
Aye.
Ms. Simulton?
Aye.
Dr. Maria?
Aye.
Mr. Plogar?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. Action item ten point three, approval of resolution authorizing dismissal and non-reemployment of probationary part-time teachers. Can I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to approve the resolution authorizing dismissal and non-reemployment of probationary part-time teachers and teachers hired on a temporary contract.
Second.
Mr. Plogar?
Aye.
Mr. Gatewood?
Aye.
Ms. Venmus?
Aye.
Mr. Serone?
Aye.
Ms. Simulton?
Aye.
Dr. Maria?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. Action item ten point four, approval of resolution authorizing dismissal and non-reemployment of first and second-year probationary teachers. Can I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve a resolution authorizing dismissal and non-reemployment of first and second-year probationary teachers.
Second.
Dr. Maria?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Plogar?
Aye.
Mr. Serone?
Aye.
Mr. Gatewood?
Aye.
Ms. Venmus?
Aye.
Ms. Simulton?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. Action item ten point five, approval of resolution authorizing non-renewal of a non-tenured teacher. Can I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to approve a resolution authorizing non-renewal of a non-tenured teacher.
Second.
Ms. Venmus?
Aye.
Dr. Maria?
Aye.
Mr. Serone?
Aye.
Ms. Simulton?
Aye.
Mr. Gatewood?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Plogar?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. Action item ten point six, approval of resolution authorizing non-renewal of administrative contracts and non-reemployment of administrators. Can I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to approve, approve a resolution authorizing non-renewal of administrative contracts and non-reemployment of administrators.
Second.
Mr. Serone?
Aye.
Mr. Gatewood?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson? Mr. Plogar?
Aye.
Ms. Venmus?
Aye.
Dr. Maria?
Aye.
Ms. Simulton?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. Action item ten point seven, seven, approval of resolution authorizing a notice of remedy. Can I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to approve the resolution to adopt the notice to remedy against tenured teacher Nicole Panzi.
Second.
Mr. Gatewood?
Aye.
Dr. Maria?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Serone?
Aye.
Ms. Simulton?
Aye.
Mr. Plogar?
Aye.
Ms. Venmus?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. Action item ten point eight, approval of resignation of licensed personnel. Can I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to approve the release and separation agreement with probationary teacher Ken Kiner.
Second.
Dr. Maria?
Aye.
Ms. Venmus?
Aye.
Mr. Serone?
Aye.
Ms. Simulton?
Aye.
Mr. Gatewood?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Plogar?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. Action item ten point nine, student disciplinary case two zero two five dash one. Can I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to expel student two zero two five dash one selected by the administration pursuant to the board's written findings and decision.
Second.
Ms. Venmus?
Aye.
Ms. Simulton?
Aye.
Mr. Serone?
Aye.
Mr. Plogar?
Aye.
Mr. Gatewood?
Aye.
Dr. Maria?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson? Motion passes seven zero. Action item ten point ten, approval of building administrator contracts. Can I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to approve the building administrator contracts as discussed and presented.
Second.
Mr. Plogar?
Aye.
Dr. Maria?
Aye.
Ms. Simulton?
Aye.
Mr. Serone?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Gatewood?
Aye.
Ms. Venmus?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. Action item ten point eleven, approval of personnel report. Can I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to approve the personnel report as discussed and presented.
Second.
Ms. Venmus?
Aye.
Ms. Simulton?
Aye.
Mr. Plogar?
Aye.
Dr. Maria?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Serone?
Aye.
Mr. Gatewood?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. And eleven point one, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.